July 7, 2025 Crest Hill City Council Meeting to Order at 7:00 PM. I would ask that everyone would please rise for the Pledge Allegiance to the Flag and please remain standing after the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would just ask for a moment of silence for the tragedy that happened over the 4th of July weekend in Texas. I just heard on the news this evening that the people have passed away, over 100 now and rising. So I would ask that we especially remember that the group of the 28 young girls that were there on their church visit, keep them in all of our prayers. We certainly, as the city of Crest Hill, want to extend our deepest condolences to all those who have died, and we certainly want to pass our condolences along to all of their family members to get through this most difficult time in their life. So I would ask for a moment of silence in honor of all those that have been taken during this tragedy. Roll call, please, Chris.
Ray Solomon.
Here.
Jamie Malloy.
I'm here.
Scott Dyke.
Here.
Angelo Disario.
Here.
Dorell Jefferson.
Here.
Claudia Gazal.
Here.
Tina Oberlin.
Present.
Mark Sapiti.
Here.
Nate Elbert.
Here.
Joe Kuvall.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, you have before you the minutes of the work session held on June 9, 2025. I would ask for a motion for approval.
Some move.
Second.
Motion by Alderwoman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Disario for the approval of the minutes of the work session held on June 9, 2025. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Angelo Disario.
Yes.
Dorell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Elbert.
Yes.
And Joe Kuvall.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
I would also ask for an approval of the minutes of the City Council Meeting held on June 16, 2025. Motion will be ordered.
Mayor, before that motion and vote, Alderman Sapiti pointed out to me that at that meeting there were two votes taken with respect to the Italian-American Cultural Club matter. I did look into the Roberts Rules, and I was actually wrong when I said that the first vote should be redone and that Alderman Sapiti could not second that motion to approve. Roberts Rules does say that somebody who later abstains can make the motion because it's not necessarily a signal that you're for or against. A motion is merely to put it on the floor. So I think Alderman Sapiti would like the minutes to reflect that the first vote was accurate. So with that amendment, I think the motion, unless there's somebody else that has other changes, but...
Two minor changes on page 18. The first paragraph, Lock Lane, not Loach Lane, and Linwood is spelled incorrectly as well. Linwood is with a Y.
Is there a motion and a second with the changes as specified?
I'll make a motion with the changes.
I'll second it.
Motion by Alderwoman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for approval of the minutes with the changes that have been spoken about. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Angelo Disario.
Yes.
Dorell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Elbert.
Yes.
Joe Kuvall.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our City Attorney, Mike Steph. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have no agenda items formally on the agenda, but certainly willing to entertain any questions if I can.
Any questions of City Attorney? All right, thanks, Mike. Moving on to our City Administrator, Blaine Wing. Good evening, Blaine.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have one item, item three. Did you want me to jump into that?
Yes.
Yes. All right, so the item before you tonight is the approval for a waiver of a permit fee in the amount of $7,180 for Will County Division of Transportation. They are replacing a fuel tank over here on Canton Farm Road. And in the memo that I drafted for council, I note that there is a $1,865 out-of-pocket fee for the incurred fee for our plan review consultant. So asking to just have the $7,180 permit fee waived, the county would pay the $1,865.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Elbert, seconded by Alderman Person Overland to approve the waiver of permit fee of $7,180 for the Will County Division of Transportation Fuel Tank Replacement Project located at 1240 Caton Farm Road. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Dorell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Elbert.
Yes.
Joe Kuvall.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Angelo Disario.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Next, Mayor. Can you continue, or...
Well, let me ask any questions of City Administrator? Okay, the next one, we're going to move on to Public Works. Blaine is going to handle this one also, which was discussed at the June 23 work session.
Yeah, and just for background, I asked Julie to actually not to attend, you know, again, watching our dollars. We've gone over most of these items, four through nine, mostly through our workshops. And so I was briefed with our interim director, so I'll go through. Item four is the purchase of the new pump. And so we had the pump and the motor. The one item that was discussed during the workshop was the motor. At DMI, there was a question. I did have staff look into that, and it is a company that has, we got references from Naperville and a handful of other, Joliet and a handful of other communities. So we're seeking tonight the approval not to exceed of up to $55,000 for the new pump and the work on the motor.
Motion will be in order.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Disario, seconded by Alderman Elbert to approve the purchase of a new pump for the East Source Treatment Plant from LAI Limited for an amount not to exceed $55,000. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Elbert.
Yes.
Joe Kuvall.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Angelo Disario.
Yes.
And Dorell Jefferson.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, with that one being done, we're going to move on to our City Engineers Report. Ron had a vacation day today. He will be back on Wednesday. Most of these agenda items, the five under him, were discussed at that June 23 work session although also, but I'm going to turn it over to Blaine Wing to go through each one of them for approval. Blaine?
Yep, as the mayor just noted, these items, at least the first handful, were discussed during our workshop. The first one is approval for the resolution approving the construction agreement at Oakland Avenue. This is the Phase One, part of our water main replacement. And what we're seeking is the agreement between the city and Scanlon Excavating in the amount of $2,449,836.10.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Jefferson to approve a resolution approving a construction agreement for Oakland Avenue Phase One Water Main Replacement, Road Reconstruction Improvement by and between the city of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois, and Scanlon Excavating for an amount of $2,449,836.10. Questions or comments? Roll call, please, Chris.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Elbert.
Yes.
Joe Kuvall.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Angelo Disario.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution 1316.
Okay, number six.
Number six, again, was discussed at our workshop. This is a resolution approving amendment number three to the August 31, 2023 agreement. This is a design build related to services with our CIPP, the Water Main Rehabilitation. Again, with the city, and this one is with Strand Associates, and there is no charge for this change.
Some move is presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Person Overland, seconded by Alderman Gazal for the approval of a resolution approving amendment number three to the August 31, 2023 agreement for design and bidding related services for CIPP, Water Main Rehabilitation by and between the city of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois, and Strand and Associates Incorporated. No change in cost. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Elbert.
Yes.
Joe Kuvall.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Angelo Disario.
Yes.
Dorell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
And Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution 1317.
Okay, move on to number seven.
Number seven, as was noted during our workshop, after our last council meeting, our engineers at Strand and Associates were notified by the Illinois EPA that there were some additional requirements, so the agreement needed to be amended. So tonight, we're asking for approval of a resolution approving that amendment, which would be amendment number one to that agreement. This allows us to continue to meet all of the original obligations and the I E P A, you know, so that Strand can do it at no cost.
Some move is presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Person Overland, seconded by Alderman Elbert for approval of a resolution approving amendment number one to the June 16, 2025 Construction Engineering Agreement for Phase One CIPP Water Main Rehabilitation Improvement by and between the city of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois, and Strand and Associates Incorporated at no change in cost. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Joe Kuvall.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Angelo Disario.
Yes.
Dorell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
And Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution 1318.
Okay, number eight.
Number eight and nine are related, so I'll call them a two-parter. The city did advertise bids and solicited contractors on page 964 in the packet. There's a list of the six companies that submitted and went through our process. The low bid, and so we're seeking the award for MYS Incorporated for the Kelly and Cora Retaining Wall Replacement Improvement Project in the amount of $372,288.22. 282? Oh, I'm sorry, 282.22 cents.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Disario to award the contract to MYS Incorporated for the Kelly and Cora Retaining Wall Replacement Improvement in the amount of $372,282.22. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Dorell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Elbert.
Yes.
Joe Kuvall.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Angelo Disario.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
The second part is the agreement with Christopher Burke Engineering to oversee this project. Staff will be directly overseeing this project, but will be getting additional consulting from Christopher Burke Engineering during this project. So we're seeking an amount of $25,000. So the request is for the resolution that would allow us to do that.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Disario for a resolution approving a construction and engineering agreement for Kelly and Cora Retaining Wall Replacement Improvements by and between the city of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois, and Christopher B. Burke, LTD, in the amount of $25,000. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Elbert.
Yes.
Joe Kuvall.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Angelo Disario.
Yes.
Dorell Jefferson.
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution 1319.
Okay. Thanks, Blaine. Moving on to our Community Development Department, our Economic and Community Development, Ron Metzner. Good evening, Ron.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you. All three of these items were originally discussed by the Plan Commission during public hearings that were conducted at the June 12 Plan Commission Meeting. All three of them were recommended for approval unanimously by the Plan Commission. It was subsequent discussion at the June 23 City Council Work Session Meeting. As a follow-up to that, we worked with the City Attorney to convert the Plan Commission's recommendations into the ordinances that are included in the agenda packet backup materials. The first ordinance is, number 10 on the agenda, is approving, would approve a variety of tax amendments to the zoning ordinance that would clarify definitions and regulations for a variety of different types of businesses that right now are either not accurately or clearly defined in the ordinance or have definitions that aren't consistent with the list of permitted and special uses in the back of the zoning ordinance. So there's really four different groups of businesses that we're talking about, motor vehicle storage and salvage-related businesses, contractor and landscape businesses, beauty and personal service-related businesses, and firearm businesses. Be happy to address any questions you might have with it, with any of those amendments. But again, it was something that the staff recommended to the Plan Commission, and the Plan Commission unanimously recommended approval to the City Council. So we're seeking approval of an ordinance amending the Crest Hill zoning ordinance with respect to motorized vehicle storage and salvage-related activities, contractor and landscape-based businesses, beauty and personal service-related businesses, and firearm businesses.
Some move is presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Person Overland, seconded by Alderman Gazal for approving an ordinance amending the Crest Hill zoning ordinance with respect to motorized vehicle storage and salvage-related activities, contractor and landscape-based businesses, beauty and personal service-related businesses, and firearm-related businesses. Questions or comments?
I just want to make sure on all the motorized vehicle storage that those are still not allowed. Do they have those, are they allowable in our zoning, right? They would be, I think, special uses. Yes. Yep, they're special uses, they would be, right now they're listed as permitted uses in the M1 and M2 district under the proposed amendments. They would become special uses, so they would have to go through a public hearing process, and the city would have the ability to decide whether or not the location was an appropriate location, and then impose any special conditions that would be necessary to mitigate the or minimize the impacts that location might have on the surrounding neighborhood.
And then the corresponding use standards is Section 8.2-26, which is also being amended to require no, no storage at a height greater than the screening, and no material or vehicles exceeding 10 feet in height. So there's use standards along with the special use requirements.
Okay, roll call, please, Chris.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Elbert.
Yes.
Joe Kuvall.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Angelo Disario.
Yes.
Dorell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries. Ordinance 2026.
Item number 11 on the agenda, we're seeking approval of an ordinance approving multiple variations to the Crest Hill zoning ordinance with respect to certain real property located at 1813 North Broadway Street in Crest Hill, the application of A&amp;G rehab properties, and it would involve the conditional approval of those variations. This ordinance that's included in the agenda packet backup relates to the only multifamily zone property along the east side of Broadway Street. The property was originally approved way back in the 1920s, has evolved over time to a point where it has all kinds of non-conforming situations on the property. The new owner of the property did come in and proactively apply for permits to totally rehabilitate the building on the property, eliminate outstanding code violations that the city was working with the previous property owner on. As part of that rehabilitation project, he found the center unit of the four-unit building to be in extremely deficient conditions from a structural standpoint, and ended up tearing down that portion of the building completely, which then triggered certain provisions of the zoning ordinance. Those provisions, along with the fact that the property has changed hands, did trigger the need for the applicant to go through the process that they're working on with the city at this point in time, and that's to eliminate the non-conforming situations on the property. Under the city of Crest Hill zoning ordinance, those non-conformities can be eliminated in one of two ways, or really three ways. One, physical modifications to eliminate them. Two, applying for and receiving variations to allow for those non-conformities to continue. Or three, which is the case in this application, a combination of those first two. I can say that the property owner and his team have worked closely with the city staff to fully understand all the non-conforming situations on the property and have agreed and submitted plans to rectify those non-conforming situations that are practically possible, both physically and economically, to deal with. And as a result, there will be significant improvements that will be made to the property, but yet there is still multiple variations that have been requested for reduced parking, and some of the building setbacks don't comply with the existing city regulations. The unit sizes of the individual apartment units don't comply with the city's current regulations, nor do the number of units. The property is smaller than what would typically be required for a four-unit building. From a staff perspective, I believe the Plan Commission concurred with this, you know, this is, this property is full of kind of unique circumstances. Most of the hardship that's been created here, or special circumstances, are not really of the owner's making. I think the current owner kind of put himself unknowingly in the situation he's in, trying to do the right thing. Instead of putting lipstick on a pig, he decided he was going to do the right thing and completely renovate that, and kind of triggered this, and that kind of, and triggered this process. So from a staff and Plan Commission perspective, we have, we're in support of the approval of this. We think the findings of fact do support this approval in the ordinance. Included in the backup materials does include a series of conditions that the applicant would have to comply with going forward.
Any questions of Ron?
I might have missed what you said, Ron, but you said the Planning Commission approved it?
They recommended unanimous approval.
Okay, thank you.
I have some questions. I apologize, I wasn't here last Monday to ask the questions, so I'll have to ask them tonight. I had some concerns with the parking and also the exterior front of the building. Parking, it shows that it should have like total three spaces per unit, so that would be 12 spaces, and there's only eight unit provided. Yeah, for the four units. I was concerned about... Yeah, they're proposing eight parking spaces for the four units. There's three one-bedroom slash efficiency-type units and one small two-bedroom unit. I think the two-bedroom is 560 square feet, so they're pretty confined. From my professional experience, I've done a lot of analysis on parking regulations in my career, and I think it's safe to say that most older municipal zoning ordinances really go way overboard on requiring unnecessary parking for apartment units. And a lot of municipalities, it's kind of a movement nowadays, is to reduce those parking requirements to be more in line with what parking demand is for apartments. There's been tons of studies to prove out the demand for parking or for apartments, different types of apartments in different geographic locations, urban, suburban. And it's safe to say that, you know, 1.4, 1.5 parking spaces per unit... per unit is a pretty conservative parking requirement for low-rise suburban apartments, especially on the smaller scale. So from a staff perspective, we feel that eight parking spaces will be more than adequate to satisfy the parking demand of this small apartment building. Part of the goal, working with the applicant, was to reduce the amount of impervious area on this property. One of the non-conforming situations is that the property had more impervious area on it than what the city zoning ordinance allows. So the property owner has agreed to remove a decent amount of impervious area, and pave the remaining gravel areas so that all the new parking would be paved parking with some illumination. So I think it's a, you know, a reasonable approach on this piece of property, and we do not anticipate from a professional standpoint that there's going to be any shortage of parking or parking challenges on this site with these types of units.
I'm just noticing a lot, even in the residential area of Ward One, where there's, you know, like two-bedroom homes and stuff, and there's six or eight cars there, there's four on the driveway, three and four on the street, and with this being, you know, four different separate units, I'm concerned about that parking number. You know, so what I'm seeing, because I just got through talking with the police department on how many areas we have in Ward One, where it's residential, just single residential homes, and there's cars parked up to the corners. So if you were to make a turn around the corner, you'd hit a vehicle.
Yeah.
It's parked right up to the corner. So we're having issues with just a single family home. That's why I have this concern with this multifamily, the four different units there, with only eight spots.
I'm not here to suggest your concerns aren't real. You live in the neighborhood, and I'm sure there's situations that you experienced in there. I just think in this, this location, there's, if there's not enough parking on the property, the people won't rent it. I think there's going to be some responsibility and motivation from the landlord, who owns a piece of property one lot over, not the immediate adjacent, but one over, that he maintains well, he's going to own and manage this particular property himself. So I'm confident that he's been a good corporate citizen in the city of Crest Hill. He's done good work on other properties. Confident that he'll do what's necessary to make sure that people aren't overoccupying his units, number one, which would lead to maybe some of the parking problems you're experiencing, where there's more people living there than they should be. Typically, you'll identify who can live in there in your lease, if you're a proactive landlord. So I, I just, I don't expect, I'm not saying there would never be a short-term parking challenge, but on a regular and ongoing basis, I can't, in my opinion, I don't, I don't, that wouldn't be a concern I have.
My other question being, the front of the building, there's no masonry, and I know we drive through our industrial area and all our old buildings, or them type of structures, they all have brick on the front of them. And I think that, you know, it's required in our residential also, in multifamilies, so I think there should be a partial brick, whatever the percentage should be, on the front of the building. Since it's been basically completely built like new.
Yeah.
You know, a lot of construction, everything.
A couple things I would offer. City regulations certainly do require all new construction, including multifamily, to have a certain amount of masonry on the structure. Masonry is defined generically in the city's regulations, so, you know, like Facebook brick materials that aren't true, like masonry construction are allowed, which are sometimes not the most aesthetically appealing. They kind of give a cheap feeling, they're not the most durable. And I think in this case, the applicant is proposing to use a quality building material, clapboard siding, which is, in the city's regulations, identified as a type of material that the City Council can consider through the variance process. So it states right in there that it could be a viable alternative building material. And I guess in my communications with the applicant's team, I think they've agreed to use a quality clapboard siding material to install wide trim boards around the windows and on the corner of the building, some decorative shingle elements on some of the gable end of it. And collectively, I think they've done a nice job to end up with a proposed architectural design that I think will be attractive, will be a huge improvement from what's there. And I would argue that it would be, it's probably, not probably, I think it will, it's going to look better than if somebody came in and put, you know, inexpensive vinyl siding on it, and a material that would satisfy the city's masonry requirements. So I think in this situation, again, looking at this specific situation, based on kind of how we got to where we are, what they're proposing to do, and all the improvements they're proposing to make, that the proposed architectural design of the exterior of this building is a quality design which will have a positive impact on the character of that property and the character of that neighborhood. And I feel it's reasonable to approve the variation that's been requested in this case. The other thing I would add is that the building is set way far back on the property. It's probably close to a hundred feet off of the Broadway Street property line. There's the elevation change coming off of Broadway Street, some mature vegetation that's being preserved. So I think for the most part of the year, it's going to be hard to really see if somebody puts some level of masonry on that particular building. Of course, if you drive on the property, you'll be able to see it, but you're not really going to notice it driving down Broadway Street unless you're, you're really slowing it down to look for it, in my opinion.
The concern I have, Ron, is with allowing a variation on construction material, even though it's, it's required in our, in our zoning ordinance, is that future developers or builders are going to see that it was allowed in this case, and they're going to request it in their case, in which case, how do you, again, pick and choose which ones
I think that's
to enforce the ordinance with, because it, you know, becomes a slippery slope.
Yeah, I think it's a legitimate concern anytime the elected officials are asked to approve variations. And I think really what it comes down to, are there special circumstances in this case that would differentiate this case, that you could hang your hat on and look somebody in, you know, straight in the eye and say, this is why we did it here, and this is why it doesn't make sense over here. And I think in this case, dealing with a property that is, dates back to the nineteen twenties, that has all these non-conformities that have evolved over time, and the applicant is investing a large sum of money to rectify many of the non-conforming situations on the property and make significant improvements to it, is a lot, in my mind, is quite a bit different than somebody coming in and wanting to build a new building where you, you know, there's really, what's the special circumstances there? That's our rules, you do it. So I think, at least for me, I could sit across the table and explain why, from a staff perspective, we wouldn't, you know, use this as an example, or a precedent-setting thing for certainly any type of new construction. If you run into a similar situation where you have, you're dealing with an old building that has to be brought up into conformance, there might be some merit in, you know, looking at what we did, what we do here as some kind of guidance. But again, I think you ultimately have to look at each situation on a case-by-case basis when you're talking about variations.
Just a quick question or clarification. This is not being rebuilt from zero, this has been rehab, correct?
The question is not
It's not being rebuilt from zero.
The center unit's going to be rebuilt, because that one was the one that was structurally, you know, terrible, it was really not salvageable. Once they started doing remodeling, it took off all the drywall, saw how poorly done the construction of the, the building was, that part of it. So that middle section is going to be completely rebuilt to connect the two ends of the building, but the, the two ends are just being renovated, remodeled.
The reason I'm saying that, because the ordinance is, when you're building a new home, it must have
Right.
bricks, correct? Or masonry, whatever you want to call it.
Yeah, it applies to all non-residential buildings in this case, because of the, the non-conforming situ, and it's non-conforming, it doesn't have any brick on it or masonry, so it's non-conforming, and because of the situation, tearing down a portion of building, they wouldn't be able to rebuild it until they bring the, the property into compliance. And again, there's two ways to do it, so I think it's kind of balancing, how far do they need to go and invest in the property to bring it into compliance? Part of, one of the ways to bring it into compliance is receiving a variation from some of the requirements that, in my mind, are clearly written for new construction.
Okay.
You done, Scott?
Yeah.
Anybody else?
I'm ready.
All right, yeah, come on up.
I'm waiting patiently.
You can certainly try to answer some of those questions, your name, please, again, for the record.
Brian Gould. I am the architect for the applicant. I've worked with Alfonso Cruz for many years now, and we've worked on residential projects, commercial projects. And like we stated, he is a business owner here in Crest Hill, that's only two doors down from the property. And we've, we, you know, got into this predicament, as Ron was saying, that, you know, he was trying to do good. He was trying to basically take his existing building permit that was given to him for the remodel, and make sure everything was going to work when he went and started, you know, looking into the structure, making sure that when we get through for the building permit, you know, building inspections, that we're going to be able to have everything work out. And what happened was is, he got to that center portion, which, again, this is a old, old building, is really a house with a breezeway and a garage, that's what it was back in the day, and over many, many years, it's been changed into what it is now. That center breezeway, which is really only two walls, two walls front and back, very small space, it's one of the studio spaces, they're in very bad condition. He decided on his own terms that he was going to take those out, because realistically, you could put the two walls back up, put the roof back up in less than two days. When he informed me of that, that's when we started to realize that we needed to bring this to the attention of the Building Department, because of the fact that it goes above and beyond a typical renovation permit. Now, a couple of things, like I know Ron's known, Ron's known about, that I've, I've kind of had a hard time with, is that I understand that it is a variance for non-conformance, but we have not gone past any areas, so to speak, we have not extended the building. He didn't try to make it bigger, he didn't, really all he tried to, all he's trying to do is just put back the two walls. And so you have to go back and understand that he had a permit to do a remodel. He was, he didn't have to do the parking, he didn't have to do anything for the parking lot, he didn't have to do any landscape upgrades, he didn't have to do any lighting upgrades, he didn't have to do any of that. If he didn't take the walls down, he would have just gone through, done the remodel, been done. And now instead, he is at, you know, as Ron was saying, many, many dollars, above and beyond what he thought he was going to have to work with. He's going to have a lot more that he's going to have to dish out to get this done now, to get close to being to this, into, into conformance. And a lot of these hardships, he inherited, which by the zoning code, he should not have inherited. Those should have been done before that property was sold to him. So what we're hoping for is really just your approvals to have him move forward, put those alternate materials on. I do understand, totally understand, especially as an architect, that we have these zoning codes for a reason. We have a lot of the codes for materials that we want to be seen on buildings, to make sure that, you know, we're not building cookie cutters everywhere, and that the new homes look different, and have the ability to put different materials on, and masonry is a better structural element, or veneer, I should say. But Ron's right, that is more towards new homes, new developments, not this case. This case is very unique in that it's really a bad mistake that occurred, and now we're just trying to minimize the damage and the cost to get back on track to, to fix what he already had in a, in a building permit that was already issued. So the, the hope is, is like Ron was saying, that, you know, if we try to patchwork this thing, and, you know, there's, there's certain requirements that are in the zoning code, for instance, for that masonry, a minimum of twenty percent of the total exterior building facade, excluding windows and doors are to be constructed with masonry, masonry materials. FYI, a minimum of ten percent, it's ten percent only, of the exterior building wall, excluding windows and doors facing Broadway Street, required to be constructed with masonry materials. You can imagine if we're trying to do hardy board, doing some detailing, trim work, and then if I only have to do ten percent, where, where do I put that? How do I do that to make that look right? Technically, right? If I only need to do ten percent, it would look horrible. So we want to make sure that this thing looks uniform, and all looks brand-new, and that we're not, you know, just tacking on some masonry on that front elevation, just to make sure that we meet a requirement for that. So my hope again is that we can move forward with the acceptance of some of these variances that we won't be able to fulfill. Parking, like we talked about as well, you know, we have not expanded, nor do we want to expand the asphalt areas. You know, the goal of this was to take a lot of this asphalt away, and a lot of the concrete away that was in front of this building. So we're, we're making sure that we're putting in more landscaping, more green space, and, you know, these units are small. So I also do not feel like this is going to be that situation, where we're going to have six cars for one of the one-bedroom apartments. I just don't see it happening. There is some additional room that is towards Broadway Street, that again, you could park one, maybe two. It's not striped, but it is there, that in case you had a guest or something that could park there. But I think we are still in a good situation of having eight parking spaces for these small units that we have in this, in this situation. So, and again, if we could redo this thing, and we had more room, we'd be closer to meeting all the regulations and all, everything you guys want, but it's going to be tough on this property to try to, to get everything squeezed in for this situation, so. That's it.
Any questions to Brian? All right, Brian, just, I have just one for you.
Sure.
So you are here also representing the owner of the property, correct?
Correct, yes.
So are you and him in agreement with the Plan Commission recommendations and the staff recommendations? There are several of them here in regards to a lot of different variations of building, of parking, and everything else.
Correct, yes, we are.
Are both of you in agreement with all of those?
Yes, we are.
Okay. All right, there's no other questions from City Council. Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
I would ask anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against the request of A and J rehab properties located at eighteen thirteen North Broadway Street with the multiple variations to the zoning ordinance. If you'd like to speak for or against it, please step to the podium, state your name for the record, your address is optional. Second request, if anybody would like to speak for or against the request of A and J rehab properties for the property located at eighteen thirteen North Broadway Street, for the variations in the ordinance for the multiple Crest Hill zoning ordinances. Please step to the podium, state your name for the record, address is optional. And a third request, if anyone would like to speak for or against the request of A and J rehab properties, and the conditions are stated for the property at eighteen thirteen North Broadway Street, please step to the podium, state your name for the record, your address is optional. Let the record show that no one has approached the podium for the City Council. You have an ordinance approving multiple variations to the Crest Hill zoning ordinance with respect to certain real property located at eighteen thirteen North Broadway Street in Crest Hill, Illinois. The application of A and J rehab properties, a motion would be in order for approval?
So move.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Jefferson, seconded by Alder Person Oberlin. Questions or comments of the motion? Roll call.
Nate Over.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
No.
Angelo DiSario.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazzal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Spitty.
Yes.
Motion carries ordinance 2027.
Okay, Brian, you are good to go. Let me say that I'm very familiar with that property. It was in need of a lot of TLC. There's a lot of disrepair in those apartments for many, many years. I think from what your group wants to do, the previous owner, the other work that he has done in the city of Crest Hill has come out very good. And I would expect to see the same thing at that property because I think it's long overdue for having some rehabilitation on that property and to make it look much better than what it has been in the past. So good luck to all of you and hope everything works out well.
Thank you.
Okay?
Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. All right. Moving on to number 12 on the agenda, Ron?
Item 12?
Yes.
Sorry. Item 12, seeking a motion to approve an ordinance approving a special use permit to reactivate a church use and for multiple variations to the Crest Hill zoning ordinance with respect to the certain real property located at 1800 Dearborn Street in Crest Hill, Illinois. The application of Redemption Hour Ministry and the approval of those special approvals would be conditional under that ordinance. This is the St. Anne's. We're talking about the St. Anne's property. Redemption Hour Ministry is contract purchaser of the property. They would like to purchase it and move their congregation to that location. This was something that the plant commission discussed again and made a unanimous recommendation to approve the special use permit and the various variations that, again, relate to existing nonconforming situations that would be difficult to change physically. So they're asking for variations to make those legally conforming conditions. With that, I think the only thing I would like to point out is that it's my understanding at the last work session meeting that the, there was a request to add an additional condition that would restrict or prohibit alcohol on the property. And that condition has been incorporated into the ordinance that's included in the agenda packet backup materials that's up for your consideration tonight.
Any questions of Ron in regards to the property at 1800 Dearborn Street? Okay, hearing none. Pastor, to the podium, please. Just your name again for the record, pastor, please.
Sorry about that. Good evening. My name is Henry Amagacha. I'm the pastor, lead pastor for Redemption Hour Ministry. The, our intent to purchase this property has just come up because we've been renting for about 12 years at 1312 Market Drive in Romeo Ville. We started as a small group of people meeting in a living room. And then we started to rent out the, a room within the Romeo Ville Recreation Center. But all those logistics made us want to have a permanent place of rental because we could only use Sundays at the rec center in Romeo Ville. And so we found a space in 1312 Market Drive. We got unit D as in David. And then we realized that we have to split up, put the children someplace so that the mothers and other family people could have that kind of peace of mind. And so we, we ended up getting another unit. Economically, it's more advisable to reach out for this property. And so when we saw it in November of last year, we reached out to our brokers and said we would like to buy the property, which is the St. Anne's Church. We're a small group of about 70 people, but we do a lot of community work. We reach out to the community. Our goal is to be able to equip men and women, help transform lives. We've been given so much in our lives as individuals. We want to share that with the community. Crest Hill has been a welcoming community to us. Our children have schooled here. Some have lived here. I've lived in the, on Run Weekend Web, just behind the Avery Bank for 21 years. My kids were in Ridgeland Grade School. They've been, they finished Lockwood High School. They finished college. So it's a, it's a very calming community. The library was our place on Teardale Road. We go there every morning, every Saturday morning. I used to take them myself. It's a place we've grown up in and we still want to invest into the community now, not only physically, but also spiritually, emotionally, mentally, and all the other things that are related to that. And so that's why we were, we made that approach. And this is where we are today. I want to say thank you so much for even giving us the opportunity to listen to the course. After having rented for 12 years, we, we believe that it's about time we took another step forward to own something of ours. Yes.
Okay. Any questions of Pastor Henry from city council? Comments, questions?
Just a comment. I'm going to repeat what I said to you at the work session. It's good to see that you're doing God's work and to bring diversity to Crest Hill.
Thank you very much.
God bless you.
Thank you very much.
And pastor, again to you, you are in agreement with all of the variations that have been discussed here, not only here, but with the plant commission also. You are in agreement with all that. And also in regards to the alcohol, which I brought up as the liquor commissioner, again, my intent is to protect the integrity of the neighborhood and to protect our police department. And I know you said that there is actually no alcohol allowed in your ministry and in the church. So are you in agreement with all that?
Yes, well, really in agreement with that.
Okay. Last call for questions from city council. Okay, thanks, pastor.
Thank you very much.
All right. To the, anyone in the audience would like to speak for or against the request of Redemption Hour Ministry for the special use permit to reactivate the old St. Anne's Church at 1800 Dearborn Street for their uses with the stipulations that have been discussed at both the plant commission and the work session of June 23, 2025. Please step to the podium, state your name for the record, and your address is optional. Ma'am?
Hi, Mayor Solomon. Hello, everybody. My name is Maureen Herten. I'm the attorney for the Diocese of Juliet. I'm here on behalf of Bishop Ronald Hicks and the Diocese of Juliet in support of Redemption Hour Ministries. We've been working with these folks since approximately November of 2024. We have been in lockstep in, you know, our shared goal, and this may be politically incorrect, but our shared goal of keeping Christianity in this community. It's very important to Bishop Hicks and it's obviously very important to Pastor, Pastor Henry. With regard to the alcohol usage, I don't know how many of you are Catholic, but you probably all know that Catholic people, you know, do sometimes drink alcohol. However, our deed, canonically, our deed to these folks is going to contain restrictions. It has to. So in other words, as long as this structure maintains the facade that it currently has, that is of a church, it cannot be used for any purpose that would be in violation of any of the laws or the beliefs of the Catholic Church. So it could never become an abortion clinic. It could never become, you know, again, any, any institution that would violate the laws of the Catholic Church. But based on the recommendation of the council, I am going to include as a restriction in that deed that no alcohol can be, can be consumed on the premises. So just to assure you of that, that will be a restriction in the deed. You know, again, I spoke to this at the, at the plant commission meeting and, and there were concerns about some, from some of the folks in the community about parking during the services. The, the St. Anne parishioners outnumbered significantly the number of parishioners from this congregation. And as I'm sure many of you know, there was a parking lot there, but there is also a lot of street parking. And, and basically for the most part, anecdotally, in speaking to many folks who were registered parishioners at this church, they almost preferred to park on the street because it was just less, less of a hassle to park on the street than it was to park in the parking lot. So street parking, I think is going to be less with Redemption Hour Ministries, but it's, it's not an anomaly in, in this community, you know, when there are religious services. So there won't be a disruption to, you know, to the community when they have their services. So just on behalf of Bishop Hicks and the Diocese of Juliet, I just want to thank all of you. Ron, you've been awesome to work with. Patrick Ainsworth at the plant commission was great to work with. There's another lady that we met with. I don't remember her name.
Zoe.
Yes, Zoe?
Zoe, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And she was great. So you guys have really all been terrific. And Mayor Solomon, you too. So again, I just want to thank you on behalf of, of the bishop and the diocese. And we're very, very excited about this community coming into the community. And we're, as you know, four blocks down the road. So we're going to be neighbors for a long time. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Maureen. Anybody else like to speak for or against the request of Redemption Hour Ministry for the property at 1800 Dearborn Street, the old St. Anne's Church? Please step to the podium, state your name for the record, address is optional. And the third request, if anyone would like to speak for or against the special use permits to reactivate the church use at 1800 Dearborn Street, the application of Redemption Hour Ministry, please step to the podium, state your name for the record. Let the record show that no one else has approached, approached the podium to the city council. You have an ordinance approving a special use permit to reactivate a church use and for multiple variations to the Crest Hill zoning ordinance with respect to certain real property located at 1800 Dearborn Street in Crest Hill, Illinois. The application of Redemption Hour Ministry, motion to for approval would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman DiSario, seconded by Alder Person Oberlin for the approval of the request. Questions or comments?
Yes, Mayor, one, one comment I'd like to make. I know that there's not a direct conflict of interest, but I will be abstaining from this vote because I currently serve on the finance committee for St. Anne's, St. Ambrose Church. And although the, the diocese is doing all the negotiations with this, I think it's just best if I abstain from the vote. Thank you.
Okay. Roll call, please, Chris.
I'll also be abstaining, Mayor, because my wife's an employee of the diocese.
Okay. Roll call, please, Chris.
I hope being baptized there doesn't prevent me from voting. It was a while ago.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
I'm staying.
Angelo DiSario?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazzal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Spitty?
Yes.
Nate Over.
I'm staying.
Motion carries ordinance 2028.
Okay. Pastor, congratulations to you. To the podium if you'd like. If you'd like, just come back to the podium.
No, I just wanted to say thank you so much. It's been a learning process for all of us. Thank you so much. It's been a learning process for us. We are, we intend to grow with the community. And that's, that's our goal, as long as we have life, we have breath. And I, I can assure you one thing, you will hear of all the good things. That I can assure you, I, I believe. So we've lived 12 years, 12 years renting a property. And my landlord is not here, but he comes in and he's, he's always surprised. We've become close. The only thing I haven't been able to do is bring him to church. I don't, I don't intend to force him to, but I hope one day he will. But we've become that close. Yes. So I can assure you that we will be good citizens of Crest Hill, be good members of Crest Hill. Yes. And I want to thank you all.
Well, congratulations to your, your group. I certainly want to say this, that St. Anne's Church was, my wife and my families perished for 43 years. And we have a lot of good memories here. Many of the people sitting at this table, many of the city council people and mayors of the past were members of St. Anne's Church also. So the memories will always remain. But we had to move forward. We have moved forward by joining with St. Ambrose. And in about another month, it's going to be, a couple of months, it's going to be St. Carlo Church. And so I did have, what Maureen said, I have had several conversations with Bishop Hicks. And we were both in agreement that the best thing was that it remained a church. Even of another denomination, it was fine. Because God is big enough for everybody. I made those comments on June 23. I'll make them in public today. And I think that your group coming in, all your parishioners that you have, this is going to be almost identical to what St. Anne's had for all those years. And then in 1992, I believe, was when the church hall was built. And we had pancake breakfasts there for 25, 30 years. So, you know, the street parking worked for St. Anne's. And we had probably towards the end about the same amount of parishioners coming on a Sunday than what you will have. So I don't see anything different. This is probably the best use that could possibly happen for that parish and for that church building. So welcome to the city of Crest Hill. I know you're a man of your word, and I know you're going to do everything to honor your word as you go forward.
Thank you so much.
I will open it up from city council if they would like to make any comments.
I think the mayor will be visiting you constantly.
I was just about to say it's non-denominational, so it's, it's, the doors will always remain open. Sometimes it may be too far to go to your church, where you go to church. And if it is raining or it's too snowy, you can walk in.
Well, as I said to you in the work session, I was so happy to hear that you weren't going to change any of those beautiful windows or the structure of that beautiful church that I remember very fondly. And I welcome you to the city once again publicly. And God bless you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Jones. Thank you so much. I really appreciate your concerns. Really appreciate what you've done for us.
I'll just ditto what everybody else has said. It's, it's emotional because all my kids were baptized there and my dad was buried there. His funeral was there. But I'm glad to see that you're keeping it a church and, and take good care of it. Thank you. Welcome to the city.
Thank you so much, Mr. Jones.
Welcome.
Thank you so much, Mr. Jones.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much, Mr. Jones.
Okay, Pastor Henry.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
Good night.
Okay, anything else, Ron?
No.
Any questions of Ron?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to our police department. Our deputy chief, Dave Reviss, is here tonight. Good evening, Dave.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, city council. Hope everyone's doing well. The police department doesn't have anything on the agenda tonight, but I would like to bring up a few stats for the Fourth of July weekend, the Third, Fourth, Fifth, and Sixth. The police department had a total of 182 calls for service. Forty-four of those calls were for fireworks-related calls. We did write seven firework-related citations. Those citations are $250 if paid five days before the hearing date. The hearing date is August 20th, so that means I can pay it up until the 15th. After that, they will have to go to the hearing date and the fines could be higher. Other than that, that's all I have. I'll ask you some questions.
How, how many calls did you say you had?
A total of 182 calls.
And how many were fireworks-related?
Forty-four.
And only seven citations?
Yes.
Anybody else? Questions?
Uh, yeah. About a month ago, I brought up to the chief and with Ron, we didn't know about the corner of Nicholson and Ludwig. And I was just wondering if they could contact me to let me know where they're at with a recommendation for what can be done there to slow traffic down or some of the accidents that have happened there already.
Okay, I will write a note and ask the chief.
We could have a work session on if needed.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Moving on to the mayor's report. I have one agenda item. It is for the discussions at the June 9 work session that we had for the reappointments and appointments of new people to our committee list and liaison appointments. So I'll just, let me read these here. My recommendations are for the beautification committee to be Alderman Scott Dyke and Alderman Angelo DiSario. The economic development committee will be Alderwoman Claudia Gazzal and myself. Gazal and myself. The events committee will be Alderwoman Claudia Gazal and Alderman Darrell Jefferson. The veterans and police memorial committee will be myself. The Liddes Memorial Committee will be Alderman Person Tina Oberlin. The Lockport Township Park District Liaison, Alderman Joe Kuhel. Forest Preserve District Liaison, Alderman Nate Elbert. And the Westcom Liaison for Dispatch Services is myself. So, I know that we had some discussion at this June 9th, and there are some future steps that need to be taken place also. So, the initial task of each committee will be to recommend that what the committee's main purpose is, the initial objectives to be accomplished, and a request in regards to budget. The staff members, probably our city administrator, Blaine Wing, will be ready to assist and currently reach out to see how other communities make the recommendations in regards to the budgets and the appointment of the members also. So, I think we have some work to do going forward, but I'd just like to put the members that I have discussed and their appointments in place. So, I am asking for a motion along with your concurrence for the recommendations as stated.
Can we vote for ourselves? Since it's all together?
I think for this purpose, yes.
Otherwise, nobody will be able to vote.
But there's only two new committees. Everything else was voted on before.
Well, I guess there's a reappointment, right? I mean...
Right. Well...
I mean, aren't they reappointed periodically, or is everything the same, other than whoever's on the new?
Usually after the mayoral election for the reappointments. They haven't changed in several years. Again, just a couple of changes that are in these also.
The only way to do it as cleanly as possible would be to vote on each committee separately and then have those members on the committee abstain, if you want it as clean as possible. I don't see it being a conflict for you to vote for yourself to be on a committee that does not have anything financial, there's no financial commitment right now.
Correct. Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
We have motion for an approval by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Person Overland. Again, these are strictly volunteer committees. Questions or comments? Record call.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Angelo DiSario.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Elbert.
Yes.
Joe Kuhel.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The only other thing is, I have, June 21st was the grand opening ribbon cutting of Farmhouse Academy, which is located in the Hillcrest Shopping Center in the rear, along the circle, where all of the service organizations used to be until they moved into their new building. Myself and my wife was there, and Alderman Jefferson showed up. I will say that Cara Finelli, if you have not seen the inside, has done a magnificent rehabilitation from the offices, from the military personnel that was there. It is a teaching class for both adults and for children that she has. And she has one that she has operated in Mokina for several years, which has been successful. So, we certainly want to wish her the best of luck at the Crestill location also. And I think that that's the first one of its type that we have in the city of Crestill. That's it for the mayor. If there's any questions, I'll certainly try to answer those. Hearing none, I'll move on to our city clerks' report. Christine Verche Hall, Chris.
Thank you. The only thing I have tonight is our community garage sale will be August 14 through the 17. The deadline to have your name on the list will be August 12. You will need a permit. Those are available in the city clerk's office Monday through Friday from 8 to 4:30. And that's all I got for you for it.
Okay. Any questions of city clerk?
Chris, what are some of the ways that we promote the garage sale?
It goes on our boards out front. It goes on the electronic boards around the city. It'll be on Facebook, and it'll be on our city website.
Have we considered putting an ad in the Herald News?
We used to do it years ago, but not a lot of people get the paper directly.
Okay.
So, we try to advertise the best we can. We do pretty good with it. I mean, I think the last one was 77 permits we had. But if council wants me to put it in the paper, I mean, we'll do it.
I've just seen other communities do it for their community-wide garage sales. Might not hurt a small ad, especially in our Crestill section that we have weekly, or five, I think it's twice a month.
Okay. Except to council. Except to those that make the motion. No, there's no motion either, just if you guys want to do it.
I mean, 77, that's pretty good turnout.
That was a very good one.
Social media, it's everything right now.
Well, it's not so much about how many permits you give. It's about people actually going and getting the maps and, you know, the other people that are actually visiting the garage sales. That's what you'd be promoting by advertising the community-wide garage sale. Just a thought. Not something we have to decide tonight, maybe for next time.
Well, we can't even, we can't vote on anything like that tonight, Mike, with expenditure of money, can we?
No, no.
No.
That's not on the agenda.
So, if council would like to see it on the July 21st, please speak up.
Sure. Why not?
We already supplement a large ad in the Herald News for the Crestill businesses. I would think that maybe we can negotiate a pretty good price to have our garage sale in there. Just a thought. I advertise in there for my business. I mean, I have a contact if you want me to work with you on that.
I'll talk to the whole council, though.
I only heard two.
I think it'd be a good idea.
Put it on the agenda.
Yes, sir.
All right. We'll have it on the agenda for the 21st then.
And can you give me the dates again, Chris?
It is August 14 through the 17.
Okay. Thanks, Chris. Moving on to city treasurer's report. Our treasurer, Jamie Lloyd. Good evening, Jamie.
Good evening. First up, I would like to approve an ordinance amending Title 13, Water and Sewer, Chapter 13.24, Rates and Charges, Section 13.24.010, City Water Service Charges of the City of Crestill Code of Ordinances.
Motion for approval would be in order.
So moved.
I'll second it. I just think there needs to be a better explanation of what this is.
I can jump in on this. I drafted this ordinance. This is the ordinance that adds to our normal water charges and rates. The only addition or change is to add a manual water meter read fee that will go on every billing cycle. And that's really to address those residences who have not gotten back to us or responded to any of our multiple requests and letters that the owner of the property contact us to have this, their water meter swapped out for the remote read water meter.
And I know the number is very low of people that haven't, so this isn't affecting that many people. But it's important that we get something like this in place to encourage people to switch over to the new water meters.
Correct. And also in your packet is the final notice that was drafted that has not gone out yet, I don't think, but is basically to, basically notify them that this is going into effect. The council has approved it, and this is your chance to not get charged this fee.
Yeah. I'll note, we're less than 75 households at this point. We have drafted a final notice letter that would be mailed out advising that as of September 1st, that new fee would go into effect if council chooses tonight. I have heard one or two comments to maybe soften the aggressiveness of our letter. So, I'll work with staff as we really are trying to get compliance. And we're hopeful this evening, again, to have the public works crews go out there and manually read. There's a cost. And quite honestly, the $50 is on the lower end of what communities are charging, 75 to even up to $150 is what other communities are charging for this manual read, as most communities have already gone to the smart meter system, so that we're getting it remotely.
We've had some residents that reached out to the city with possible issues of the meter reading, the replacement of the meter. And have there been any further discussion in that with those residents?
As far as I know, we have addressed a few of the ones that have had concerns. There might, if there's others, we're happy to work individually with each homeowner to try to resolve those. I have talked with our building department as well. And if there's the water heater, you know, we could be bringing to council to potentially waive the $50 permit fee. We would still feel for life and safety issues that the permitting, we should still be doing the inspection that would go with the permitting, but we would just waive the $50 fee. That would be staff's recommendation. So, we do have time between now and September 1st to bring back for council some recommendations to address any of the concerns that, again, 72 are remaining right now. And we've been able to work through some challenges already with some of those homeowners.
I know the one you're talking about, the water heater, because I brought it up, but I don't think it's fair to waive to one person and not the rest. So, something that we have to discuss about how we're going to waive, and if you're going to do it for one, you're going to do it for everybody. It's not fair to pick and choose.
Yeah, no. Staff's recommendation would be for anybody who's remaining, as we've gotten the majority of the community. But we're happy to bring forward that, along with if there's any other requests. If council knows of other issues that people have come, you know, come up with, or direct them to me, I'm happy to have conversations and try to resolve those.
Okay. Thank you.
And this $50 fee would be monthly, or what I really think, every two months?
Yeah, so it's every two months. So, every time we'd go out to do a read, so it could potentially be up to $300 for the year. Again, we're hoping for compliance and not trying to add out a fee.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We have motion by Alderman Jefferson, seconded by Alderman Albert for an ordinance amending Title 13, which is Water and Sewer, Chapter 13.24, Rates and Charges, Section 13.24.010, City Water Service Charges of the City of Crestill Code of Ordinances. Questions or comments? Record call.
Angelo DiSario.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Elbert.
Yes.
Joe Kuhel.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Motion carries. Ordinance 2029.
Okay. Anything else, Jamie?
Yep. Then I have an approval of list of bills issued through July 8, 2025, in the amount of $1,238,982.82.
Motion will be in order.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman DiSario, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for the list of bills. Questions or comments? Record call.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Elbert.
Yes.
Joe Kuhel.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Angelo DiSario.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Lastly, I have regular and overtime payroll from June 16, 2025, to June 29, 2025, in the amount of $283,091.23. Okay. Any questions of city treasurer? All right. Thanks, Jamie. Unfinished business? We have nothing. Anyone? New business? Anybody? Committee liaison reports. Anybody?
Mayor?
Yes.
Sorry. Can I bring up the golf outing?
Absolutely.
Just take a minute of your time. The Crestill Police Association is hosting its 15th Annual Golf Outing at the Morris Country Club, September 29. We are looking for golfers, sponsorships, donations, anything that can help us get back to the community. Last year, we donated $10,000 to three charities. And if anyone's interested, they can contact me here at the police department, or they can email our committee at chpainfo@cityofcrestill.com. I can email or mail them a pamphlet if they're interested. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I had a question. Sorry, I missed it with the city clerk's report. Chris, I asked you a while back about city apparel for council members, and you said you were working on that. I was just wondering what the status of that was.
I'm going to be dropping you guys an email. They will be ready. If you do one, order one, they will be ready for you by time. So, it's a little bit of a municipal league. But the policy is written for employees only. It does not include the council, so the council would have to pay for her shirts individually. But I will be sending you guys a link to look at shirts. I will drop you guys an email tomorrow with what the policy reads, but it does say employees only.
Okay. Thank you.
Can you make sure it has women shirts, so it doesn't happen the same thing to me?
Yeah. When you order, you just got to make sure you put the W behind it, the item number. It'll have a W behind it, and that means women's.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Public comment. Anyone like to address city council? Please step to the podium. State your name for the record. Your address is optional. I let the record show that no one has approached the podium. Mike, there is a need for an executive session, correct?
There is. Five ILCS 122C1 appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body.
Motion will be in order.
So moved as presented.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Person Overland, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for an executive session. Record call, please, Chris.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Elbert.
Yes.
Joe Kuhel.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Angelo DiSario.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
And Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right. We'll be going into executive session at 8:23 PM.